It's a budget committee of the whole meeting. Tuesday, October sixth, it's one thirty. And I'm just going to read a public notice before we get underway. Due to the efforts to contain the spread of COVID nineteen and to protect all individuals. City facilities will not be open to the public to attend council and committee meetings until further notice. The public may submit written correspondence regarding agenda matters by email to the clerks at Richmond Hill dot C A. Written correspondence must be submitted by twelve P M. The day before the meeting. Comments submitted will be provided to all members of council. And considered as public information and noted in the public record. With regards to electronic delegations, the public may. Apply. To appear as an electronic delegation by video conference or by telephone. Applications to appear as an electronic delegation must be submitted by twelve P M. The day before the meeting by email to the clerks at Richmond Hill dot C A. Or by using the online application form town on Richmond Hill dot C A. The office of the clerk will provide instructions on appearing as an electronic delegation. Okay, so we've all got that. Now, the first thing I need is an adoption of the agenda. Someone willing to move that counselor, Chan, second by vice chair barrels. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Okay, is there any members of this committee that have a disclosure of pecuniary interest? And state the general nature thereof. I see none. I only see one, two, three, four, five, six. I see seven counselors. So I've seen no declarations of pecuniary interest. We'll move on to delegations. I don't believe there are any. And straight into the scheduled business. So the star of our show for the budget process, as always. Be our David Dexter, our financial services and director and treasurer. So he's going to his first presentation will be regarding the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one operating forecast. COVID nineteen pressures and updated cash flow. Take it away, Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for the kind words and good afternoon. I think if I could say so, start at the start, the stars of the show are. All the finance staff that done all the hard work to get us here to this with these reports and all the work involved under the leadership. He's the manager of the area. So those are the stars. I want to say thank you. Shout out to them all. So moving on into the presentation, the first one, the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one update operating forecast. Considering the COVID pressures and cash flows. This is a follow up to the update we provided. Where we gave an update on the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one outlook. As we get deeper into the COVID pandemic and appearing to be moving well into a second wave. There's a lot of financial implications that result from that. So I'm going to be walking you through. Up here on the twenty twenty outlook and then take a hard look at twenty twenty one is especially that's where the second wave of the pandemic really impacts the. The organization and of course, give a brief update on the cash flows, which is a piece of good news. So the first update, the first piece of all, let's start with some good news. The federal provincial safe restart agreement was completed in early September and we're soon to get our share of those monies. This slide next, I really kind of go through the details of it. Ontario government announced up for four million dollars, four billion dollars worth of assistance to all municipalities in the province. About two million for municipal operating pressures and two million towards transit system. That's further broken down. One point six million is part of the first round of emergency funding of which six hundred ninety five million dollars of it. Is towards municipal operations. As I mentioned, it's a it's it sounds like it will be two phases. We know it will be two phases. We have received the phase one funding. But phase two. Will be an application based based in end of October to be submitted by the end of October, but on the phase one. The six hundred ninety five million billion, sorry, million dollars that I identified in the previous slide. What's going to be was agreed to be split fifty fifty between the upper tier and the lower tier for the provincial direction. And we received four point one million dollars worth as that point indicates. We will have to report back to the province March twenty first. March, March twenty twenty one, sorry, with how the funds were used and our impacts of the COVID situation. And for phase two, I did indicate that the end of October submission for for applying for it to the province. We will need a council resolution. We're planning to come forward October twenty eighth with that because I believe we will attempt to apply for funding. As our COVID impacts are are directly greater than the four point one million dollars that we received in the phase one. Last week, we started getting details from the province about the process and details and then webinars are scheduled this week. So we're starting to move there and staff are getting involved in the webinars to understand requirements for the phase two. So this this slide here gives an update on twenty twenty. It's a little bit different, but it's a little better news. On the first part of the graph there, I I we indicate first column really is what we reported in June. At the B C W meeting and then the last column indicates where it's at now. And when it comes to the first portion of the graph that the COVID impact really isn't much different than the six point four million dollar impact. That we could communicate in June is that it's a six point three, some small changes there. We go on to the mitigating measures. And June, we indicated there was about three point eight nine dollars worth of measures that's. That management had undertaken, including such things as hiring freeze. Wherever possible, the some eliminated programming programs in house and in upfront facing the community as well as some discretionary spending. pauses on. So that has that's been a little more refined to three point six million dollars. As you see there in the last column. At the June twenty third council meeting, we presented a large list of programs and initiatives that could be paused or not done. And we move forward to action from there. I got a couple of slides following just to re list, list them again so that you get reminded what they are. But the benefit of those was seven hundred eight thousand dollars to cost reduction. So we go further down and then, of course, the B A U I should should not use the acronym, but that means business as usual. So these are such. Items that happen on a regular basis, no matter what's going on around us there. So. Surplus items of what six hundred four thousand dollars, a little less than eight hundred thousand that we reported in June. You know, the most largest item there is the payments in lieu of taxes for the Orlando Transit Station. That still hasn't been resolved with the ministry and the region. So they're still having to pay us those monies. So before we consider how the grant, the subsidy monies are applied. From one point eight million dollars that we indicated in June was the was the deficit. That's gone down to almost one point four million dollars, moving in the right direction, thanks to council's approval of what was proposed at the last meeting. We've received the funding of four point one million dollars. So twenty twenty should not be a problem. In fact. Applying all that surplus money, all that subsidy money, all the surplus of two point seven million dollars. As I mentioned, these are this slide, the next slide just reiterates the mitigating measures that council approved in June. I won't go through all of them. I just touch on the ones that are big importance now because a majority of them are in motion. The first two items reduce the allocation. To the, or sorry, not reduce the allocation to the operating budget of the investment income, which we were hoping to do over a phase period of a number of years. We can make that decision at the end of the year when we see how we are. So that's why it has been actioned when I can wait till the end of the year. Same with the use of a library of a surplus in the library. At this point in time, we don't know whether we need to use some of that or not. So we said with pause on that, we can make that decision at the end of the year. The list of other items here and on the following slide in our items in process. The one thing I like to note, the we the repurposed one there, that's the casual staff layoffs. We went about those layoffs in the most part, but we had to reallocate. To to do renovations at the operation center. So that's what we did with that. Again, this is the remainder of the items here that have been actioned or in process of being actioned for the total of that seven hundred eight thousand dollars. Okay, so. I mean, as I mentioned, that we are, we are going into the second wave and probably are in the in it a little bit of the virus and. The real impact on a financial basis in twenty twenty one. Doesn't really impact as much in the latter part of twenty twenty because it's the recreation and programming area. And those are pretty much a break even period in the fall. Most of the volume of things turn happen in the spring and summer periods there. So the impact of the second wave really hits us in twenty twenty one. And what I've shown here on this table here, just a reminder of the first column of numbers is the twenty twenty outlook, which I've gone through already. But in June, we reported the middle column to you. And that indicated the impacts of of COVID nineteen that we knew at that time, considering just a wave one. Was an an impact of one point six, almost one point seven million dollars. And that's a lot of lost revenues of almost six million. Of course, we would not be hiring the casual staffing and the programming. Us that we were there. So we would mitigate some of that to get it down to the one point six million dollars. So with the second wave of of COVID that we. The revenue losses with more than double to almost thirteen million dollars. We're taking, we're averaging conservatively an average for the full year of twenty one. Enrollment in the rec programs of about fifty percent and that's a whole year average. So again, that that goes down and after we the mitigating. Direct costs that we wouldn't have. The impact's about four point three point four point four million dollars. So we're talking about an extra. Two point seven million dollar of impact for the continuation of the virus. Good news is that we still won't need all that grant funding that we had applied in in twenty twenty. Because we've done a lot of mitigating measures as management team and staff. That we've applied some of that monies to twenty twenty one to help get the number down to one point six one. A million dollars of the deficit just related to COVID nineteen. So the numbers are very similar. And it was just a subsidy that really helped us there. With the additional impact of the virus. This doesn't include the business as usual type stuff, the base budget, the contracts we have, the inflation factors. What growth there is in the community and the cost that go out to them. That's an additional impact that we had indicated back in June of about one point seven million dollars or equivalent to one point four percent of a tax rate. We got direction there by committee to come in at point five percent and staff applying to do that and report out in January. To the B C W at that meeting, meeting that direction. So. Mr. Chair, I'll end this presentation on a good note. Current balance as at the end of September is a hundred and twelve million dollars. And we've had tax collections of about ninety percent up until now. We're still fishing through how the October collection due date went. That was just late last week. But we anticipate at worst case, it'd been seventy five percent. Collected, in which case, if it was that, then we'd still have a bank balance of almost fifty million dollars. Of course, in the very, very worst case scenario, we would divest some of our investments. So we have a portfolio of four hundred and eight million dollars there. So long and short, the good news, no, there appears to be no cash flow concern for twenty twenty. So the last slide, it's just the recommendation to receive this update for information purposes. And I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Treasurer, and certainly congratulations are due to to yours, your staff, all everyone in the finance department. And to you and in cooperation with all the staff right, right across the board here at the city. Done an excellent job under extremely difficult. And unprecedented situat- situation. As as members of committee can see. Are we have been able to successfully mitigate the the COVID impact. We still have actionable items that we could draw on if if the impact even gets worse than it is, but as far as twenty twenty goes. We we're on budget. And and we are, we're able to. To. To reach all the targets we did for for this year in twenty twenty and and now it's up to us to. To to figure out how we're going to manage going forward to twenty twenty one. So is there any members of committee that have questions? For treasurer, I'll start with vice chair, counselor barrels.
I thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I I wanted to first commend you for the the work you've been doing with this committee. I know you've put in tireless hours. With the the budget staff being Mr. Dexter and his team. And thanks goes to to you, Deputy Mayor DePaolo, and of course, to Mr. Dexter for that hard work. I've been privy to a number of those meetings and the the success lies with our staff, but I also want to say a huge thank you to our residents. We we put out the the call early in this in this year saying that, look, it we're going to. Help people where we can with no fees and no, no penalties, but if you're able, please just pay your taxes. And the community has has met that challenge with a huge resounding, we're here. And as you can see, they've paid their taxes. So thank you. I have no doubt going forward, that same level of cooperation with with our residents and with. Council and the staff is going to be getting ourselves some great results to give value back to the residents of Richmond Hill. So. I'm delighted to move the motion to receive this presentation with thanks, Mr. Chair.
You're muted, Counselor Apollo.
Sorry about that. Okay, so thanks for that, Vice Chair Barrows. I don't require a secondary. We have a motion on the floor. Any other questions for treasurer? Okay, noted, Counselor West.
I thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, as always, Mr. Dexter, to you and your staff for making a very complex and multifaceted. Group of informations, all very understandable. So I appreciate that. In both your presentation and your staff report. A couple of things, I mean, I I do appreciate the fact that we've done well. In mitigating a very difficult situation and and I think there are lots of kudos to go around. And I do appreciate the comment that we're not out of the woods yet. Can you just remind me, we do have a tax rate stabilization account? That, you know, it is, I think we probably need to look at. In using that as a backstop in case we need to in two thousand and twenty one. Can you just remind me what kind of balance we're looking at in that account?
To you, Mr. Chair. We do have a tax rate stabilization reserve for the purpose of one off challenges as we're going through. It's about a six point eight million dollar balance right now in that reserve. That could help us with some of our twenty twenty one pressures that may be directly related to COVID nineteen. If we're not successful at any additional funding through wave two, a phase two application to the province. May want to consider using that to help mitigate these one time challenges.
Okay, and and actually, that does bring me to what I was going to ask next. So you had mentioned that the criteria are not set yet for the phase two funding. Do you have any other details as to what is will be required in terms of that and or? I presume you have a sense of what some of the other GTA municipalities are also looking at in with regard to phase two funding. And, you know, like I presume that our situation in Richmond Hill isn't unique with regard to that. Could you comment on those two things?
Mr. Treasurer?
To you, Mr. Chair. We just started getting more information by mid part of last week and our setup this week. So we're, we're learning a lot right now about. You know what they're looking for in and there's a series of forms and so forth. I I had a meeting this more early this morning with the area treasures in the region. Had a brief discussion on this and they had indicated that. It's 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 they're making you go through a lot of reporting requirements to. To to put in for face to face, yeah, phase two, it's a, I think it's at least ten pages of information, financial ratio that's filled out. I think they're looking at, did you make, did the municipality make new mitigating measures, they consider using reserves, so forth. It it would be interpreted to me as that the province was really not intending it to be too easy to get to phase two funding, right? So phase one was was generous, I believe. And so. I don't know much more. I haven't seen all the details yet of it all, but I'm just hearing side conversations on that. We're going to learn a lot more by the end of this week.
Okay, thank you. Two other questions that aren't related to the last few, I guess. Could you remind me, and I'm sorry, I forgot about this. So the Orlando facility. Amount that you're talking about, how much is owing to us right now from the region? It on that issue?
I believe that's that is in the ballpark of about six hundred thousand or five hundred ninety thousand dollars. And that's, that's an annual number. That's in there, right? So they, I don't know why the ministry hasn't really focused attention on it to our benefit at Richmond Hill, right? But it's still on the region's radar, right? So this is about three years now in a row, I think. I think it's this is the third year. Twenty twenty that we've received this revenue and it's been quite helpful.
So so where are we at with that then? I mean, the region is is not willing to pay that amount then, is that? The idea, where are we in the process to get those funds from the region?
To you, Mr. Chair. No, the region is is a good corporate system and they do pay it. They're not causing problems. They do believe it's not. Appropriate to do that, one taxpayer. That's their viewpoint, but it until the ministry comes up with a ruling, they they rightfully pay and they don't give a problem on that.
But why have they not paid it up to this point then?
Though they have paid it, it's part of the surplus, part of the financial outlook, numbers that we have there, they have paid it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you said then because I know the last time. I think that we had had a meeting, they had not paid it at that point, but so they must have since have paid the amount.
Yeah, it's just a matter of time, right?
Okay, all right. The only other thing I wanted to just mention, and I don't know whether other counselors have had this concern raised to them or not, but. On page, I think it's slide six. There is a mention of a mitigating measure that we took in amongst that package that was the reinstatement of. A a fee for replacement of green and blue bins when they're damaged. I have received a surprisingly high number of complaints about that. I realize that in the mitigating measures, it wasn't the largest sum of money compared to some of the others. I think it was fifty thousand dollars. That we were expecting to save by reinstating that fee. But I I just, you know, the concern that I'm getting from residents, and I do agree with this, is that. I realize that there's a life cycle to the plastic that could, you know, makes up those bins. But, you know, in almost all cases, the final damage that ends up happening to those bins. Probably in the resident's mind and probably legitimately is attributed to the treatment that it's getting from the person. From our waste contractor. I mean, there, it may be the dead of winter, it might be minus forty, they throw it onto the ground and it breaks and. I've been getting a lot of feedback from residents that there, it's somewhat insulting to have to pay for the replacement of that bin when. In the past, the bins have been able to be replaced for free. So. I just throw it out there at this point. I mean, it's not an actionable item, but I think when our operating budget discussions come up. In the near future, I think that is a fee that we need to take a look at because I'm not sure that it's terribly fair to be charging residents. When their their bins get damaged and and I think it probably would be best if we went back to what we were doing. Anyway, thank you very much, though, for the opportunity to speak and and to you, Mr. Dexter and your staff, as I said, thank you for your. Your excellent work on this very complicated thing that we're doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, counselor. Now, we have, we have some other presentations, so I'll put the the motion on the floor to a vote to receive this presentation. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. Thank you, committee, we moved to four point two, the financial sustainability strategy. And again, a presentation by Dave Dexter.
I think it was the chair. This is a report. It's a presentation. It's really a continue closure to some of the work, the the work that the capital sustainability steering committee did. Through six meetings on it culminating in our first financial sustainability strategy. So the steering committee was established in two thousand and nineteen. To inform, educate, count the committee and council on some of the financial challenges we have. It's also well, again, the an underst- for that committee and council to get an understanding of each asset categories. The plans and the strategies involved with each of them and the service levels that we provide through those assets. And then from that derive a long term capital investment strategy. Through through the six meetings. All the assets were presented, the various plans and strategies for them. Financial impacts were reviewed. There's a lot of recommendations that came out of the committee that council approved that staff went away to work on capital forecasting reflecting that. As well and direction and strategies. So as I mentioned, staff took the direction from that committee. Those committee meetings and the recommendations and went back and updated the ten year capital forecast and. And then from that, that capital forecast was presented to the June twenty second sustainability committee meeting. And incorporating all the directions as well as we took it to the next step to do financial analysis. But I'm just on the forecast itself, it saw a significant change. It actually, the forecast we got was produced by about ninety million dollars from the previous capital forecast, which is done in two thousand and eighteen. The largest item in there really was the removal of the civic precinct project, which was about two hundred million dollars worth. So go to the next slide. There was a couple of other areas that really saw a large increases, just to kind of make the math match for you there. In particular, the roads, water, wastewater, capital program, infrastructure. Plan for the ten years increased by about seventy two million dollars. You know, updated costing scopes as well as involvement in regional projects. You know, reflected more updated realistic capital forecast there. And then on the facility side, those also increased it by about thirty two million dollars over the ten years. You know, portfolio, it has increased and it's reaching certain spots in their lifecycle where certain important aspects of. Our facility to be replaced and update upgraded. And all those factors into the increase of thirty two million dollars. So this is a. Just kind of a high level presentation of a table of the capital forecast by asset categories and, of course, the various funding sources. Ten year capital forecast is eight hundred seventy five million dollars, almost eight hundred seventy six million dollars. And turning to the funding side, as you can appreciate, the anticipated two major funding sources for this capital forecast is the tax supported capital reserves. And of course, development charges for growth projects. A precise basis. Briefly go through the reserve categories that are. And the concerns we have with them, the forecast that's been provided and updated that puts significant pressures on many of our reserve categories. The tax supported reserve funds is probably the one that's the most highlight and it's. It really was the basis, the concern of us establishing the sustainability committee in the first place. Get done there to make sure that we are providing our assets the right way we want to and how to deal with the financial impacts of replacement. Given the existing capital forecast, and if we did nothing else, didn't apply a financial sustainability strategy of a balanced portfolio of funding sources. Our capital tax supported capital reserve would expire in twenty twenty five. Next category that suffers significant pressures, the water quality protection reserve fund, and that's when we deal with stormwater management fee. Stormwater management infrastructure. Through the town, that's a large portfolio, the storm pond sewers, valleylands, so forth, and. It it's set to expire, you know, over the next two or three years. Early in the year, we came to budget committee the whole during the budget process, twenty twenty budget process, we've indicated this, we proposed a new rate strategy. Early in the year, we came to budget committee to hold during the budget process, twenty twenty budget process, we've indicated this, we proposed a new rate strategy that was more equitable in nature, that put, uh, shared the burden more, uh, with, uh, the non-residential sector as well as the, uh, condominiums and so forth, and that would create more revenues coming in. Getting that structure in that we're gonna have in place for twenty twenty-two will help address some of the funding gap, funding shortfalls that we have in such immediate term and provide longer-term sustainability, more flexibility of how we deal with funding of stormwater assets going into the future. Development charges, um, development pays for, uh, these assets, right? And then you now, on the last report of this agenda, I'm gonna, I'm gonna indicate that that's more of a case who are good news for municipalities. In this capital forecast, we have three hundred and ten million dollars with the capital projects that are growth in nature that would be development charge funded. That's probably, that's more than would be anticipated revenues to come in, so, um, we're gonna have to either consider, you know, timing of these projects as we go through each, each capital year, um, if we do need to advance them, uh, because of growth needs, then we'll probably have to bridge finance the debt, um, until the development revenues come in, um, and then pay off the, pay it off through develop, pay the debt through development revenues. That's not a tax impact, the servicing of debt that comes from development charges is fully funded from development charges. But we would have to do that if the projects kind of stay where they're aligned in the capital forecast. And we should, and the last item there, we received about six million dollars in federal gas tax each year. And it's we, we earmark it primarily to help assist the tax-supported reserves and repair replacement of those. So financial sustainability strategy has three main pillars, the way we look at it. And we need to find a balance of these three main pillars to have a, a sound fiscal financial strategy. Capital management, which evaluate the program annually for balance of what's needed in investment in the community as well as the city's finances involved there. Add debt into the portfolio, and so you have a full gamut of, of financing tools. Appropriate use of debt is for generational equity, where you do major works on major pieces of, uh, of infrastructure or assets that have long lives that the cost to do that should be shared over time, not just funded by today's, uh, taxpayer. Of course, you want to manage your reserves as well, you don't want them depleted, um, you want to maintain a balance in there and use them prudently, uh, maybe for small asset replacements or lower costing asset replacement. And as we're gonna propose, as we go into the strategy here, interest from such a reserve, uh, for maintaining a certain balance in reserve should help fund, uh, debt servicing costs going forward. So at the June twenty-third, twenty-second meeting, we presented, uh, some core principles that we wanted to instill in the financial sustainability strategy. And, um, the committee received it well. We want to maintain a base balance in our tax-supported, uh, capital reserve funds at forty million dollars. That balance is a little over forty-five million dollars right now, so we need to move forward to putting strategy, the strategy in place. Continue the annual contribution to tax-supported reserves, um, and that's through the operating budget and through the capital fee that we charge residents. Right now, we can, between that fee and what we contribute to the operating budget in twenty twenty, it's fourteen million dollars. Add debt to the financial toolkit, um, it, for longer, so, longer life assets. And then, of course, as I mentioned in the previous slide, use the interest from the base balance in the tax-supported reserves at forty million dollar above, um, to help fund the portion of that servicing cost, so that residents aren't having to pick up the full load of that cost. Next slide. So at the committee meeting in June, we presented three scenarios. And I'll briefly go through them here and I'll guide us to, uh, our recommended, uh, sustainability strategy. The first is the status quo, as we call it, pay as you go. And as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, if we continue to do that, um, our reserve funds will be depleted by twenty twenty-five. And then after that, debt is a large piece of the portfolio and a debt levy and so forth, the pay for debt servicing costs really climbs up very quickly, uh, from then on. So we don't believe that's, that's, uh, a sustainable way to go, and we believe that should be struck. The second choice is the, is to continue with our one percent capital fee that we charge the residents, that's one percent increase per year. Include debt as a part of our funding portfolio for, for generational equity. And use the reserve to help, uh, fund, uh, interest, I mean, use the, maintain the balance of the reserve at forty million dollars and use that interest to help fund debt servicing costs. So we would be increased, continue as we are currently doing, increasing the capital sustainability fee by one percent each year. Um, this is a better solution than option one, but we still have, the way we see it there, that's still not the best solution. It's actually, we still see with the existing capital forecast that, uh, it's gonna be hard to maintain the tax-supported reserve funds at that level. Um, as debt grows and grows and grows, the need for debt grows, um, ha- past twenty thirty, and as the need for debt grows, so does the debt servicing costs grow going forward. So that's still not the best option, and if I go to the next slide, um, third option we presented, uh, then, was the one that we are recommending. And that is that, uh, we increase the capital's asset fee that we charge residents by one and a half percent per year, starting in twenty twenty-two. This debt will help smooth out the impacts to residents. We maintain the reserve balance of forty million dollars, uh, the interest will partially offset the cost of debt servicing costs. Um, and then, um, what we're finding from the capital forecast that we have before, uh, right now in front of us is that, um, that that need starts to decline after twenty twenty-five, and in fact, there's no debt requirements identified for twenty-nine and twenty-thirty. So based on this, like, this listing forecast, we can see an end to the debt near the end of the ten-year horizon. And we believe for twenty twenty-two that we start with this, uh, sustainable financial strategy for funding our capital program. I may, uh, note that, uh, a financial strategy and a capital forecast is a very fluid exercise that needs to be reviewed each year. Uh, there's a number of plans out there that, uh, still need to be updated and completed, like the asset management plan, which, uh, the core assets and infrastructure uh, needs to be updated by mid-twenty-one per legislative requirements. And then the non-core assets, which are smaller in nature, um, for the asset management, need to be approved by the following year, twenty-two. Those two plans alone will make, uh, inform the capital forecast quite a bit. And as we go further along in updated OP, um, official plan, transportation master plan falls from that as well as the update to the urban, urban, urban M E S P, which is the, uh, in-ground infrastructure that's for the intensification corridor. And then we're updating the recreation and parks plan as well. All of those will inform and update the capital forecast, which then we go through the diligence of revising this financial sustainability strategy to, uh, align it to be, have the right balance. So, that's, it's like, so, uh, the recommendation of the report is to receive it and to, uh, approve the third scenario, which I went through more quite elaborately there, uh, to commence in twenty twenty-two, capital budget process, and I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Mr. Treasurer, and, uh, members of committee, I just, just want to, uh, restate what was said there, you know, this, this, this term of council has done a great job in, in facing head-on the, the, the impending, uh, financial ins- unsustainable situation that we were in. Uh, we were trudging toward a cliff at, at a very fast rate, um, but we've taken a hard look at, at where we're spending specifically in tax-supported capital requirements, and we, we've made a lot of tough choices as a council. And, and we've done a good job in slowing it down, where in twenty twenty-three, we were gonna deplete those reserves. We've now pushed it out to twenty twenty-five, it's not just the cancelling of the civic precinct, precinct. Um, we've scaled down what we're gonna do at Observatory Park and, and it's still gonna be a fabulous park for our residents. We've, uh, we, we haven't trudged ahead as we would have, business as usual with a new community center and a new fire hall in the north end of, of Richmond Hill. Major changes, tens of millions of dollars that we've ta- taken from the, that, that, those capital asset requirements. And, uh, there continues to be other ways that we're gonna, we're gonna, um, we're, uh, s- scale back our, our needs to, to spend the tax dollars on capital requirements, and we are going to, um, uh, hopefully, uh, not have to, not have to go to any, any extreme lengths. But as the commissioner has stated, we are looking at maybe some debt financing, maybe an increase in our, 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 our C S levy. But that's not till twenty twenty-two, so we're not approving anything today in, for our twenty twenty-one budget. But, uh, I suggest we, we, we adopt the recommendations in the report. Is there a mover for the treasurer's? Uh, Mayor Barrow, uh, Mayor Barrow moves a receipt of that presentation and the recommendations. Stated there, that the financial sustainability strategy for the tax-supported capital program, based on the third scenario presented in the staff report, be implemented, uh, commence, commencing in the twenty twenty-two capital budget process. Okay, so we have that being moved and, um-
Just to comment if I can.
Oh, absolutely, Mayor Barrow, go ahead.
No, in, uh, following, uh, Mr. Dexter on this, uh, we're dealing a, a lot with, uh, strategies that we have, uh, we've not quite covered up or carried forward in the last little while. Sustainability is becoming more, more important to us as we go forward. So I want to, uh, thank, uh, Mr. Dexter and his team and, and certainly yourself for working with it to, uh, to get us, uh, at least one or two more years ahead of where we might have been. But, uh, so with that, I certainly, uh, move in with this.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Barrow, and anyone else have questions or comments?
I would please. Good day, um, I'd like to ask if it's possible to add a fourth option. Um, a fourth option that I haven't seen is where we look at where we addressed, where we can try to gain some productivity or maybe even a fourth and a fifth option, where we try to focus on using our current operations and primarily focusing on, uh, what we need to get done in areas that we are unable to get, uh, priority in, uh, or we make it our priority we to get value-added services elsewhere for more effective reasons. Maybe we should be looking at those options. So for example, if our, if our arena operations costs a hundred dollars an hour to, um, to manage and to operate and another party comes in at eighty-five dollars, you know, perhaps that fifteen percent savings could be utilized towards other operational means, assuming that we get the same, uh, you know, uh, output that we're getting now, that maybe we should be looking at a way of which is there other people that can maybe, uh, help us in this process, that maybe they've got, you know, uh, other more, uh, innovative ways at which they could, uh, you know, produce that same output that we're doing now and giving value back both to the users of that service and our taxpayers as a engagement enterprise. And number two, what I would say to you is what we need to do, uh, because when we start talking about, uh, looking at ways of higher costs, we need to have some level of manner where we can be self-sustained, because if we run into other shocks or continual shocks we have now, and we continue to look at this approach of either debt financing or we look at dipping into our reserves, giving our, general speaking, um, our, our competitiveness as a municipality. And as a government, we can't simply keep asking others to subsidize what we're doing. We should, uh, which I'm not opposed to, if that's something that we need it because of the downloading of cost to our municipality. But we also have to look at all of those costs that we're incurring or increasing debt, also disproportionately amount to affect people who are, are having struggles. Continue to increase and they maintain their income level.
We're, we're losing you, Counselor Munch, you're your audio is, is not coming through. But, uh, I, I like your proposal, your suggestion. Can't, can't hear you, Counselor Munch, but, um, I, I, I really like your proposal. And if you want to move, uh, in four point two recommendation, a, a number C, that staff-
I'm sorry, I'm station-
To work to, uh, to, to increase revenues and to reduce the capital asset burden on the- So, I, I'm, I'm gonna let you speak after, but we, I don't think the others can hear. Am I the only one who can't hear Counselor Munch? No, uh, we, we, we can't hear you, Counselor Munch. But I like, uh, I, I like where you're going with this, because rather than just leave it as it's a done deal, we continue to try to be sustainable. We continue to, that, that finance staff continues to work with council to, to, to lower our capital asset burden. Something to that effect, can, can you hear us, Counselor Munch? No, we can't hear you, Counselor Munch. Would another committee member want to move a general?
Yes, I am, yes.
Oh, okay, so you're willing to, to make that?
A hundred percent. Why is that?
Okay, so I got the thumbs up, I think Counselor Munch wants to move an, an amendment that we added, we added number C, and I'm very comfortable with doing that. That staff, finance staff continue to work with, with council to, uh, seek other sustainable measures that can be implemented prior to twenty twenty-two. Mr. Treasurer, would that be okay?
Mr. Chair, that's, that's fine, yep. Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, so we got, got a motion on the floor from Counselor Munch, maybe if, uh, there, there we go, thanks, Ryan. The finance staff continue to work with council to seek other sustainable measures that can be implemented prior to twenty twenty-two. Beautiful, okay, uh, any, any discussion on that, any other questions? I'm not seeing any counselors jumping in, so I'll call the vote on, on, uh, first, we'll have to take the amendment. All those in favor of adding an item C there? Uh, I see more than six hands, that, that carries, and then on the main motion, as amended, with, uh, staff recommendations, A, B, and now C, all in favor? Okay, that carries unanimously. Very good. Okay, so we move on to item four point three on the agenda. We've got an update on Bill one ninety-seven, the COVID-nineteen Economic Recovery Act, and again, a presentation by David Dexter, our treasurer. Take it away.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, and that's, uh, the report and the, uh, and the presentation has quite a long title. To find, to find a paraphrase it for you, it's really the changes in the development charge and the community benefits charge, uh, legislation, uh, that's come down through three bills from the, from the province. So this report gives a brief update on those, um, as well as, uh, describes a proposed process for updating our development charges, uh, going forward and as well as, uh, our, for the city's first, uh, community benefits charge. So, uh, there's been quite a, the, with respect to the development charge and community benefits charge, there was a number of bills that came down, bills one oh eight, one thirty-eight, one ninety-seven. Um, they changed process, uh, timing of collections of development charges, when developers could lock in development charge rates. Uh, the most recent, uh, information came down, uh, and proclaimed to regulations, uh, September eighteenth, which the province proclaimed the remaining amendments. Misfires will have two years to transition to the new regime, which is the, uh, changes to development, development charges, uh, as well as, uh, putting in place any, uh, community benefits charge. Uh, the information on the community benefits charge, uh, they provided information in the regs that, uh, it's gonna be based on land values, um, for a maximum C B C, uh, prescribed at up to four percent of an appraised land value that a municipality could collect, uh, for assets that they, uh, don't have included in their development charges or any other bylaws that they're collecting for. Respect to develop, in the development charge framework, uh, this is good news for municipalities, um, the, uh, it's no longer, we're no longer required to find, uh, ten percent of the funding from some other source, uh, for shop services like, uh, libraries, parks, park development and recreation services. Now, now, all of those developments of those things are a- Now, now, all of those developments or those things are a hundred percent decent funded, which is very good news. I mean, if I was to quantify that for you, we just recently, well, two thousand and eighteen, sorry, nineteen, we did update our development charges. And council approved that, there was fourteen million dollars worth of. Of, of funds required to find through the ten percent in that, in that background study that. Now, under the new legislation, we won't have to find it anywhere else but development charges. We will also be, the, the parkland dedication that through the planning act, some slight changes, but not much. Reinstates the existing parkland provision, which means for the short term here, the city can maintain its alternative rate that they charge. And allows also for parkland contributions and community benefit charges to be applied to the same development. Provided that development is of greater than five floors intensified type development. This slide really erates a little bit more of that, and the community benefits charge, we can impose a community benefit charge. For items that are eligible to development charge act, provided we didn't, haven't put the need and the funding for those through the development charge bylaws, we can't double account, double collect. Look for clarification of what, what types of develops we can charge, it's community benefits charge. The development has to be at least five stories tall and at least ten residential units. And it's same for any type of redevelopment, so it's really intensified development that this community benefits charge is applied for. So now that we, now that we know the, the rules to the game, now we can start playing it and look to updating our development charge bylaw. First, we're planning to do the first update by mid-twenty-one, in which case we're going to. Make sure we update the charge so that we put a hundred percent collection for all services into the development charge, right? And not more than ten percent finding other sources, so we're doing that immediately, that's money on the table. So, and then we're also in twenty-one, we're having to update two of our area-specific bylaws that are along the. Employment corridor, along the four oh four, the baby northeast and the head first. Excluding the storm elements there, those are, those are bylaws that seem to expire as they have a five-year life, and they will be expiring in twenty-one, so we'll be updating those at the same time. The second update, we, as, when you update your development charge, you want to make sure you capture everything, all the costs that you are going to incur. We have a targeted timeframe to be completed by, for the end of two thousand and twenty-three, as it needs to be informed by. Collection of various serious plans and studies, of particular note, an updated official plan provides us updated growth numbers. And the official plan identifies our transportation master plan needs, so that falls out of that, so we'll have that updated information. An updated urban M E S P, which is the in-ground infrastructure down the intensification corridor, updated parks and. Parks and recreation plan, all that information will be done over the course of twenty-one and into twenty-twenty-two, and we would then implement that to our development charge. Have communications with the development community. And then, and then to go through the whole D C process, which is quite elaborate according to legislation. Last point to consider that we're going to be, we're going to be involved with having a lot of discussions with the development community as the consideration of area specific versus citywide development charges. It's a point of, a bit of contention, it was a result, the result of the two thousand and sixteen O M B appeal. And give you an update on that in a slide or two, but it will, will have to continue discussions with the development community on that. The community benefits charge strategy. That should be the part we'll be looking to establish our city's first one bylaw for that. And it can be established in parallel with the update to the parkland dedication bylaws, as I mentioned earlier, we could apply. Both the parkland dedication bylaw and the C B C to the same developments, provided it's a high-rise development, five stories or higher and at least ten units. So we have two years, the, till September eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two, to put that in place, so we're going to be starting that up. And we, I mean, like, the legislation just came down, so I don't, we couldn't tell you what the financial, full and financial impact of this C B C charges. Benefits to the, to the city, it just came last, recently, a couple of weeks ago, and we're going through assessing it. I put an example on the staff report through a paragraph of the general impact of. A land appraisal fifteen millions and twen- and two-hundred unit building resulted in about three thousand C B C charge per unit. And the monies that we collected there, about six hundred thousand dollars from that, that's just a, a micro example, but we need to look at it in a greater sense to really understand it. More, so it's intimacy here, but certainly upon the priority list for us. Then the final thing, and it's, uh, this is the two thousand and sixteen, our two thousand and sixteen D C bylaws. Which we, which council approved then, were appealed. We had our hearing in early two thousand and seventeen and late sixteen, and. The results took an awfully long time to get here, we just got them back over the summer months, and I'm reporting on this here. Just to give a brief, there was five parties that appealed us. Three of them identified in the first point, first part of the first point. We had a settlement with, and we had minutes of settlement, which we refined some of our benefit to existing calculations on some of the bigger items in there, the. Urban M E S P and the flood mediation items, they were generally satisfied with it, withdrew their appeal. But there were still other parties left that wanted to continue on with the appeal, so they did. We finally got ruling, as I mentioned here, with the ruling back was in favor of the city, which is great. And the appeals that were, were dismissed, and the appeal was, were really based on the overall concept of area specific versus citywide. Development charges, right, so that's why it's something that we'll be continuing to have to have a lot of discussions with going forward on that. So the result of the settlement, and then, and the minutes of settlement that we agreed on was that there was some refinements to our D Cs. And so we got this final ruling back, we're holding back the issuing of refunds, because. If the result of the appeal worked against us, then we'd have so many more refunds, so. We have about a, since two thousand and sixteen, you had a hundred and forty party, development parties go through. And you can imagine the bill is quite large, there including interest, about one point seven million dollars of refunds that we will have to give to those parties. And this is just the recommendations of the report to, to receive it. And to approve our two-phase approach up in the D Cs, the immediate update twenty-one. And of course, the all-inclusive update to, to be done prior to the end of two thousand and twenty-three, back to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Essentially, you're giving us an update for our benefit, our committee here, the, the successful L Pat hearing. And, and putting us on notice that in, in next summer, you're going to begin a new development charges bylaw. To, for implementation in late two thousand and twenty-three, so do I have a mover for that motion? The staff recommendations, thank you, Vice Chair Barrows. Okay, does anyone have any questions regarding development charges? Or I see Counselor Silivitz, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you to our treasurer, Mr. Dexter, for all the work here and your team as well. Greatly appreciated, just one question that I would like to ask through you, Mr. Chair. To Mr. Dexter, with regards to the community benefits charges. And help me understand, I want to make sure I have this quite clear. This now replaces in its entirety what was, what we used to know as section thirty-seven benefits, right?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, you could, you could probably say that, section thirty-seven no longer is, now we have the community benefits charge.
Okay, and the, the amount, thank you, and this is in effect immediately now, it's, it's, it's been passed, right?
The legislation has been passed and the regulations provided, we have two years to, to have our first C B C in place, they give us two years to get there. Right, so the clock started ticking two weeks ago.
Thank you, and I, and I don't want to project too much out into the future, through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Dexter again. Can you tell, do you know at this point whether or not this change to the C D C will. C B C will give us less or more benefits? Put you on the spot, just, just, you know, just a broad, just broadly.
Yeah, through Mr. Chair, I, I'm optimistic, I think it's, it is, it will be a benefit. It provides us, it opens the door for us to include other assets that we could collect for, not just. Greater parkland requirements to the, because of intensification, high-rise intensification, but there's other asset categories that we may not be able to. Collected or allow on the development charges act, which may have some means on this, but we haven't had a deep dive into it, but there's, you know. You know, public art could be helped, could be considered here and this, that we have to take a look at that. Way, we're going to be talking to our consultants, Watson and Associates, understand the benefits of all, but to me, it looks like there's an opportunity that more funds would be collected through this process. I mean, that's just, you know, don't quote me, I can come back and say, oops, well, the numbers look different, but it appears to it right now.
Okay, well, that's, that's, you know, a, a good news story. And the last thing I would like to address through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Dexter is. Let me see, how to, how do I phrase this? The, are, are you allowed to publicly say how much that refund is? Or is it still part of a legal?
No, to you, Mr. Chair, we, the report identifies the amount in it about what the aggregate amount is of the hundred and forty parties. So now we're going about communicating to them and try to get the refunds going, that's going to be going on this month. So it's not something that's, that's confidential, it's in the public report here.
Okay, so it is in the public realm, okay, that's, that's great, thank you so much. And we don't, it doesn't, do we, we aren't hit for a loss for, for that, are we?
Yeah, that's, it's, through Mr. Chair, yes, there is, we went through the O M B appeal back in sixteen, there were three significant parties. That identified in that slide, that we had discussions with and came to a settlement. With them, and that was some refinement of the benefit to existing, which is really the town's portion to find elsewhere on some of the major. Elements of the town-wide update then, the urban M S P and ground infrastructure, the flood remediation opponent. And, and made a sharpener, sharpen the pencils even more, and it's to the benefit of, of the developers, or else they wouldn't have backed away from the appeal. So there is that, so it is an impact to us, we estimate about one point seven million dollars. But granted, that's hundred, we have to give refunds to a hundred and forty developers. Or developments that came off since two thousand and sixteen, because this case took four years to get a resolution, so. We, we're applying a D C rate that was approved by council back in the day, knowing that we had a minutes of settlement situation. To resolve that would reduce the D C a bit, but we didn't do that then, because why do that? And then again, go out there, and then if the appeal worked against us, for the remaining parties that continue with the appeal. And we had to reduce it some more, and that just creates an administrative nightmare, so we said, put on hold the, the refunding for that. And then when we finally get settlement, and some came in totally in favor of the city, but we still have to deal with the minutes of settlement agreement that we had with those parties that backed away. And for a hundred and forty developments that came in over the year, one point seven million dollars, which includes an interest component, probably highly expected.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dexter, I just wanted to make sure what I was, we, I was understanding exactly what I was reading, because I wasn't, wasn't a hundred percent clear to me. So that makes it much, much better for me, thank you, thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, so we have a motion on the floor by Vice Chair Barrows. The three, three recommendations from staff, as they appear in the staff report, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. And, and thank you, committee, and it, it's great to be pulling forward with unanimity on, on these matters, and I just have a short statement I want to read. Deputy Mayor Pirelli, did you have a question on the last one, I'm sorry, I thought you were voting, okay, here, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman, I was, just wanted to make a quick comment, I want to express my thanks. To you, to Vice Chair Barrows, and especially to David Dexter and his team. A year after year, and Mr. Dexter delivers. And I, I'm really just in awe when I, when I listen to you and, and hear you ramble off all those numbers, it's. It's utterly amazing to watch, and, and I just want to thank you from my heart. That you do an amazing job and continue to, to do a great, great job for the city of Richmond Hill. That's all I wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank you for all your efforts and, and your diligence and, and making sure that. The taxpayers' dollars are very well respected.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Pirelli, and before I ask for an adjournment motion, I, I just, just a short statement. You know, on behalf of this committee, you know, as a city, we've moved mountains to be in a position to endure the financial fallout of COVID nineteen. Now Richmond Hill is a leader among municipalities and a shining example of how to manage a budget in a crisis. I'm proud of what we have accomplished, but it's our residents who deserve a big thank you. Despite our decision to waive penalties and interest on taxes until January two thousand and twenty-one. Over ninety percent of our residents have paid their taxes in full for this year. Their efforts have helped support Richmond Hill's recovery and continued services for the family, neighbors, and the entire community. I just wanted to, to thank our residents, and with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Pirelli, all in favor? Very good. If, if Counselor Munch is unanimous?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
There we go, thank you very much, everyone.